Caladonia Board of Trustees, our regular meeting for Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. First item of business is the call to order in the roll call, so I'll call the roll. Trustee Snow Inc.
Here.
Trustee Hermanet.
Here.
Trustee Bradshaw.
Here.
Supervisor Harrison is absent. Henry is here. Trustee Zoller.
Here.
And Treasurer Robertson.
Here.
All right. Everyone except our supervisor is here, so we will move forward. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve our community. Thank you for the privilege that we live in a free country and we have these rights. Ask that you would be with us tonight, excuse me, as we govern and help us to do so kindly and with respect for one another and with the best interests of our community at heart. We pray for those who protect us in the fire and service and police, and we just ask that you'd watch over them and bring comfort to their families in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay. The next item is going to be a motion from me to appoint trustee Bradshaw as our chairperson for the rest of the meeting.
Support.
Support.
That has been moved and supported. You are on, sir.
All right. Uh, next.
Oh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is considering consideration of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes that need to be made to the agenda tonight? If not, would entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda that's written.
We, our managers wants to remove a few things that were not provided to us.
Yes.
Prior to.
I'd like to table 10A for the resolution. We still have not received legal support from JTB's attorney for Kettle Preserve. We need a legal description to approve that resolution. And then also 10D, the technology contract. We have not received the contract from VC3 to review it.
And then?
And then I think that we'd also like to table 10E. Uh, we have some questions about the HVAC maintenance contract, some of the services included in there. We just need to make sure that they're all covered within the costs that were given.
So the language they used was table. Is it okay if we strike them and then they just come on a future agenda? I mean, technically, we're not hearing them.
Actually, she can't make any sort of a motion. We have to make a motion to remove them.
Right.
So I'll, I'm gonna support what she suggested is.
Make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to remove item A, D, and E from the agenda and bring it back at another date.
Support.
Okay, any further discussion on eliminating these items?
My, what, a motion to adjourn?
It was a thought.
I was thinking the same thing, Dick.
Super.
All right. All those in favor of striking A, D, and E, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, they are remote. Okay. Uh, any additions or any other changes to the meeting agenda? Not approval to move forward with those removed.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Support.
All right. Motion by Snow Inc., support by Hermanet. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda. Next is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to speak about anything that they want regarding the township for up to two minutes. Please come forward, state your name for the record, and, um, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Christina Tassilar. I am the representative for Caladonia on the Kent District Library Board of Trustees. So I'm here tonight to say hello. I'm your board rep to KDL and to say thank you because library service around here works as a partnership between the local governments and KDL. We really are grateful for that partnership, and I know that the residents of Caladonia are as well. They value the library and the library is valuable to them, so thanks. You have a really phenomenal staff at this branch. Um, they're running programs to promote childhood literacy, which I, as a mom, appreciate, uh, but they've got things going on for people of all ages and a whole lot of different interest areas. They're keeping books stocked on the shelves and all the things beyond books that are part of the library collection, like video games and blood pressure monitors and a number of other things. Uh, if you ever have questions or concerns or ideas about how the library can better serve this growing community, feel free to stop by and talk to somebody at the library or your regional manager, Lulu Brown, or you can reach out to me directly. I would welcome those conversations. My contact information is on the sign-in sheet back there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much and appreciate your service, um, on that board. And certainly, if you want to watch our relatively short agenda, feel free to stay the whole time, but if you need to get back home to your kids, that's understandable too, so. Um, all right, I think that's it for public comments. So we will close section number four of the agenda. Uh, next is five, inquiry of conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest on tonight's remaining agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move past that. Next is approval of the consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval or any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
All right. Uh, motion by Zoller, support by Snow Inc. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And consent agenda is approved. Um, no reports from boards, committees, officers, and staff noting the manager's report was just approved in the consent agenda. So correspondence, we do have an item from Kent County Sheriff's Department, the fourth quarter statistics. Uh, I did actually reach out to manager Nugent. Just, I happened to see this in the Gaines Township packet when I was looking around in there, so appreciate you inserting this in and just always interested in how things are moving along in the township from a safety and security standpoint, so thank you. Is there any additional comments on that correspondence by anybody? Okay. Uh, move on. There is no unfinished business, so new business, remaining item 10B, approve the 76th Street Water Tower painting project for final payment. And Allison, brief overview?
Absolutely. So the 76th Street Water Tower was painted back in the fall of 2023. There was a year before it was inspected, which is why it's being, they're asking for final payment now. Um, they had Dixon Engineering and Inspection Services come out and they found everything, all of the fixes that needed to be fixed had been done, and they're comfortable with recommending that we release the final payment, and that is in the amount of $42,349. The amount was previously approved, it just needs to be paid now.
Okay. Any other board comment, questions?
And we just, we just addressed this for the first time a year ago? I know we were talking earlier. Dick, is that when this came up? It seems like this was such a long time ago.
I think as Allison said, we actually had it painted in '23.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, but following the painting, I think Dixon Engineering probably comes out and does an inspection, so.
Oh, gotcha.
Just took some time to get all the approvals and.
Yeah. Uh, we were surprised, I talked to IA about it, they were surprised that they weren't pushing to get that final payment sooner, but they haven't really pushed, and, um, all of the checklist items that they needed to fix have been done to their satisfaction, and they're comfortable really with the township releasing the payment to them.
Make a motion, we approve the 76th Street Water final payment?
Approve. Support. Motion by Hermanet, support by Zoller. Any further discussion on the payment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Payment is approved. Next on our remaining new business agenda is item 10C, which is approved, to approve replacing heat exchange units in the fire wash bay and training center. Um, and this, the memo comes from Allison and fire chief Siler is also here, so, uh, please give us a brief introduction.
Absolutely. So, um, during the election season, uh, the ladies were counting votes in the training room, and they went to go turn on the heat exchanger, but it was cracked, and upon further inspection, they found that if they were to turn it on, it would be releasing CO2 gases, which obviously, as you could imagine, is not great next to a fire, but the fire department. Um, it is an old heat exchanger, it does need to be replaced. It wasn't replaced previously because when that training facility was constructed, it should have been moved, it just wasn't. So it does need to be moved and replaced. I did reach out to four companies to get quotes. Uh, I did get a fourth quote, but I didn't get it in time to put on my, um, onto the board packet, but it wasn't the cheapest quote. I, um, reached out to Houst, I reached out to Blains and Siemens and Quality Air. They also inspected the heat exchanger in the wash bay, which is also broken, and they all gave me, um, quotes to fix both of them. The lowest quote was $6,600 from Houst Heating and Cooling, and that is who I recommend to go with to replace those heat exchangers. And for the one in particular, in the training facility, it also needs to be moved.
And they're gonna do that at the same time?
Yes.
Make a motion to word the contract to Houst Heating and Cooling.
Support.
Motion by Zoller, support by Snow Inc. Any further discussion on approval to Houst? Um, I just wanna know, thank you, Allison. I always appreciate getting three quotes, and it sounds like we've had four, so thank you for your hard work on, uh, making sure that we're getting the best value for the township. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. It's approved. Uh, last item on new business is 10F, a motion to approve longevity pay policy, and this also comes to us from manager Nugent. If you can give us another introduction.
Absolutely. So, um, when I was doing employee evaluations, one of the things that came up was, um, doing longevity pay bonuses. It was never something I considered, but I started, uh, collecting information from other townships and other municipalities, and they do it a couple of ways. Some municipalities do it as a percentage increase to their base pay, some do it just as a bonus. Um, I believe that, uh, employees should be rewarded with pay increases for performance, not necessarily for longevity, but I do believe that longevity bonuses are a really great way to say thank you to staff. Um, and I started those, my recommendation is to start at 10 years and then go on up to 35. We have maybe five staff members who are at 10 years or above. I don't think we've done anything previously, but I do think it's a really nice thing to, a nice way to say thank you to our staff.
Okay. Thanks for that introduction. Any board comments or questions or discussion?
Allison, from a background, I know, I know this is, uh, starts out in, in the thing, uh, longevity pay for public employees. Is it, is it, are there other townships that do this?
Yes. There are a lot of, um, a lot of, a lot of townships do it. They do it different ways. Some of them just do a percentage. Um, we do, we don't have anything currently, so my thought was, you guys can change these numbers as you see fit, but I thought, you know, 10 years, a bonus check, it doesn't affect our salary structure. It's a very nice way to just reward them. And, and the other idea too, that, that Scott brought up, that I thought was really interesting, was he said maybe instead of doing it as 500, you do it 1% of their salary. So at 10 years, it's 1% of that salary and not, you know, 500 or 750. It's not that hard to track. I just put these numbers down because I thought, okay, this is a good place to start. We'll have to adjust it with time and inflation, but I wanted to get something down so we could put it in our personnel policy manual eventually, just to reward our employees, and we can continue to, um, adjust it and change it as times change and.
Yeah, and the reason I was asking, I just don't know any other companies doing that, but I mean, it's nice to hear that others are doing it. I don't know if I speak to, is that, am I hot on that or?
I don't think it's normal for corporate companies to do it, but they do bonuses. So this is kinda like a bonus, but it's for, it's for years of service.
Makes sense.
And just for example, I think Marsha's on her 27th year at the township. I believe that Jean just celebrated her 20th year. Kyle Fennels at 18 years. Um, we don't currently really do anything because we have limits on spending of $25, so this is a really nice way, instead of giving somebody a plaque saying thank you. I mean, maybe it's not a lot, but it's something, and it's a way I think that we should reward our employees. It's a good thing to do for our employees.
Okay. Any further comments or questions, Treasurer Robertson?
Yeah, at the risk of extending the meeting past 7:15, I, I, uh, I do, I do have some things. First of all, I, I begin by saying I strongly agree with the need for longevity bonus. I, um, I think it was me who pointed out when we had the, um, the personnel reviewed, the personnel man, and we talked about potential amendments, I think it was me who actually brought this up. Is it something that we would like to consider? And I, I'm a strong believer in it. Um, you know, my particular, um, observation was that in our township compensation plan, you know, at, we, we, in the first 10 years, we, we reward longevity by giving more PTO. Um, you know, it goes from whatever to, I don't know, at two years and then five years, and at 10 years, you, you get an additional 40 hours of PTO. But then once you're, once you pass the 10-year mark, you get nothing else in terms of, you know, thanks for your long service. Now, as a township, awarding PTO, with the exception of the fire department, doesn't cost us anything because we don't bring people in to cover, um, our employee, office employees when they take time off. In Scott's case, over at the fire department, if somebody's got PTO, then he has to hot, bring somebody in to cover those hours, so you're paying the PTO and you're paying an employee to cover it. In fact, I think the introduction of our latest full-time fire fighter was simply of getting to a point where there was accumulating PTO and the need to have somebody else available to cover without having to pay overtime. So suffice to say, I'm a big, I'm a big believer in it. I do have some, some questions and concerns about, you know, the memorandum that Allison provided. The first of which is that this is requesting a motion to approve the policy, and, um, I, I just have some concerns about the way this is written, and I'm not sure it's ready to approve it as a policy. I think we could approve it maybe in structure, but as you'll see from some of my concerns here, it might need some fine tuning. The first thing I noticed when you look at this memorandum, the word employee shows up five times, and that would certainly give you the impression that this is a benefit that applies to township employees. Uh, the point I would make is, you know, we don't think about it, but the township actually has over 65 employees. Um, if you count, well, you count the seven of us here, we're employees of the township. Is it suggesting that we should get a longevity bonus? Brian and I are in our 25th year. What is that, $1,500 for us? That doesn't sound so bad. But my expectation is that that wasn't the intention of the policy. You know, we have building inspectors, we have board review members, we have all of these other departments. So I think, uh, the, the policy, unless that's the intention, that it applies to all township employees, there needs to be clarification of policy about which township employees are being, are being offered this additional benefit. And I'm not saying who should be in and who shouldn't, shouldn't be in, but I am saying we need to be clear about who's in and who's not. The second thing that I would mention, and Allison reviewed or touched on it briefly, is that second, that second paragraph in her memo where she talks about the two methods. I too have looked at a number of, uh, other entities. These would be public entities, not private entities, and there are quite a few. You can find all kinds of them out there. And I would say that a percentage bonus and a base bonus, I didn't do enough to say that it's a clear, you know, preference for one or the other, only to say that there are, that there are, are perks. But I, I would disagree respectfully with Allison's comment that the, um, the first method is a percentage increase in the base salary. Um, a longevity bonus is not a, a change in the base salary. It's an addition to the base salary. The base salary, for those of you who are familiar with it, we have a whole table. It's divided into grades and it's got levels, and employees progress through those levels, and that's the part of compensation that is, that is determined by performance. And the idea is, is employee improves and they advance through those levels. I think one of the things I've found over the years, especially early when I came in, and it's even true now, that the majority of our employees are in the top level. You know, there's nowhere for them to go unless their job description changes or the grade changes or the board in its wisdom to say, well, maybe we need some more levels out there because, um, you know, certainly, I think the majority of our full-time employees are, there's nowhere for them to go. And so the idea of a longevity bonus makes sense. But the point I'm trying to make is that this is not a percentage increase in their base salary. It's an addition to their base salary. And then therefore, that addition can be computed as a percentage or a fixed amount. And, you know, townships and other entities go both ways on that. But I would also disagree with the ramifications of large impact on the budget. Again, um, the impact on the budget will be the same. If it's fixed or percentage provides a percentage, represents an amount that's similar or equivalent to a fixed amount. So I don't think it impacts the budget differently at all. And so the decision is made as a percentage or is it, is it fixed? Um, and I think there are pros and cons to both, really. Um, the concern I have about a fixed rate is that the value of it goes down over time. If we say $1,000 today, five years from now, that's $950 at the current rate of inflation. 10 years from now, that's, that has a buying power of $900. So it goes down over time unless the board intervenes and keeps up in handy. The idea of having it as a percentage of salary is that it, it, it reflects an increase in the cost of living simply because that amount is built into the base pay and the percentage is then added to the base pay. So it's kinda self-correcting in terms of, of, um, of keeping track with the cost of living. So I think that's an advantage of the percentage. And just to run some similar numbers, we're talking about numbers like 1%. We're not talking 5%, 10%, 1, 1 and 1/2%, um, given some of the ranges that Allison has suggested. So, again, I agree that, uh, increases in base pay, the structure of our compensation plan should be based on, on performance and perhaps some consideration of whether there needs to be some, some, uh, reconfiguration in terms of are there enough levels or do the levels reflect the value of these employees in terms of their performance? That's, that's a, a topic for another time. A couple other things, I'll just go back for a minute, um, would be the difference between part-time and full-time workers. You know, we're choosing in this compensation or, um, benefit program to measure time or longevity by a calendar, years. But longevity can be measured by a clock. And the point I would make is that full-time employees over the course of five years or 10 years or whatever are putting in hundreds of more hours than part-time employees. Now, they're both valuable employees, but should the bonus be based on the fact of just the years or should it be a reflection of the value they brought to township in terms of the hours that they put into the job? And I would, from my opinion, I would favor the latter, uh, and not, not just everybody gets, gets the same thing. One other point, um, that I would make is that I think there are some people, other than maybe us as board members, maybe board review members, Butch Wilton, for example, has been on the board review for almost 30 years. You know, does he get a bonus? Um, our building official, Gary's been here for over 28 years. Would he be included? So I think those decisions need to be made. But I think there are some people that should not be included. Don't be offended, but I think anybody that's on a employment contract, which right now would be Allison and Katie, our assessor, and the fire chief, should we develop a contract for him, which I think we should? I think those longevity amounts can be factored into the renewal of the contract, which generally occurs every three or four years. So when that negotiation occurs, I think those that make that determination or, uh, negotiate the contract can take into account the fact that this person has been with the township, and that can be a supplemental consideration, but should not necessarily be built. It could be built in, but, but I, I think maybe that should be a separate item. And if that's not enough, but that's all I can think of.
Okay, thank you. Do any other board members have comments on the draft policy?
Yeah, I, Dick, it's good points you, you, you bring up on those, on different things. Like, it makes me a little bit, I'm not sure which way to go. You know, that's the, that's where, as I think about it, and you say, it's like, I'd like to have maybe a little bit more thought. I'm for it, but I do agree that there's some things that we gotta probably figure out what we're doing, especially with part-time, full-time and that kinda stuff. So I like the idea of it, and I think it's definitely on the right track. I just, I don't know what we'd be voting on right now, cause I.
You know, one thing that, um, Dick said that, you know, based, full-time based on part-time, we do it based on a percentage for longevity pay, then the people are gonna be compensated based on their, their hours.
Their working.
So that's a way to take care of that.
Right, and that's one advantage of the percentage, it's, it's built right in. But on the other hand, some, some might have the opinion that, no, really, it's, it's, you know, we're interested in the years. You know, it's, it's, you've been here all these years. And again, I don't think this is right or wrong. I think the percentage kinda builds in the cost of living impact, buying power, keeps it consistent. You could put a fixed one in there, but then every time we do a COLA, then you do a COLA on the bonus part of it, and you can fix it that way. So there's different ways to go about it. But I would agree with, with Dale, that, um, totally for it. I, you know, I was kinda wanting to push for it, um, but I think there are details that need to be resolved, and I would make a motion that we table this.
Support. All right, we have a motion and support to your table. Um, I guess I wanna add briefly, I think overall, this is a good idea too. Um, when I worked at City Catwa, they had a similar policy, and I think it also kicked in at 10 years. Now I made it to nine, so never got to achieve it. I personally like the idea of percentages. I think it solves a lot of the bureaucratic challenges of keeping it up to date from year to year. And it could be as simple as, um, basically what's laid out on the table here is 1% for the first, 1 and 1/2 for the second, 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%. That would be under the assumption that a full-time employee was making $50,000 a year the way it's currently laid out, and I think that's pretty close for some of our staff right now. Okay.
I forgot something.
We're still discussing, so please feel free.
I appreciate you. I, the one thing about this one, um, that I'm, I'm, I don't agree with, um, in fact, I'd be a hard no on this, would be the idea that these, these, again, this would go back to a fixed amount that's applied at some time, is that it's at five years, 10 years, 15. Now, in my employee, Marsha, for example, she's in her 27th year. She's kinda getting close to 30, but what happens if, for some reason, she leaves the township before the 30th year? She don't get anything, you know, because she didn't make it to 30. The, the programs I have seen basically put the bonus on, like, on years 11 through 15, you know, each year, and then when you get to the next benchmark, it's this much for each year. So $1,000 would be $200 a year, the percentage equivalent of that. But I think it's unfortunate that somebody could be midstream, and I tease Martian and say, you know, if he won the lottery, you know, I don't expect you to get made it to 30, and probably she wouldn't care about the bonus at that point. But nevertheless.
I think that's addressed, right here. It's addressed at the bottom, last paragraph. People who have served between that would get a one-time.
Yeah, it's a one-time bonus, but that's for the people that are already here.
Right, so she would get a 25, she'd get her 15, and if she made it to 30, she'd get an extra bonus.
Yeah, but she's made it to 28, and she gets nothing for that.
Well, she does. She gets a, she gets a 25, and, and then it's an incentive to stay two more years.
Yeah, but wonder if she dies.
Well.
It happened here.
What happens if you get hit by a car on the way home tonight?
Tomorrow is promised to no one, and so that happened to Colleen Dymo years ago. She was, had been here for, she came before me. I bet she'd been employed for 15 years. Um, she contracted serious illness and passed away, and the idea is, well, sorry, you didn't make it. Whereas if you're applying that and that every year, then the person is always current instead of, well, you gotta hang on now till you get to the next five year. And again, I think this is something that needs to be discussed. I don't wanna resolve it tonight, but that's something that I think is very important.
Well, that, that was kinda the point is, not necessarily that we come to an agreement, but what works? How can we, how can we look at ways to, um, thank our employees? And I think this is a good starting point, and I appreciate the dialogue, and I can.
And I can go back to the table and say, let's go from a percentage perspective. And we can get it to the point where everyone is happy with what it is.
And I think if you take bits and pieces of what people said, it sounds like percentage is the way that, the way you laid it out is a good way to do it. I also think that if you're, if you're talking part-time people, they're entitled to it. But you utilize a percentage there of how many hours are they working compared to full-time? And if they're working 20, then you get half of what this amount is. Those are just ideas. Those, that's the way you could.
It would be based solely on their, their salary, that percentage of their salary. So that's how it would even out and be fair.
True, that's true, yeah, you're right.
And if they're in between the years, the five-year segments, and we're starting it now, you just pay them on what their previous, if they had passed 25, that's what they would get.
I, I truly believe that if you're at 26, you get the 25th anniversary. If you're at 14, you get the 10th. I mean, I, I know we're starting now, we're starting today, but I think it's goodwill to the people we have and a thank you. It's a starting point.
Just as a point of reference, I think there are only five people in the entire township that basically are at 10 years or more. Two of them, Marcia's 25, Jean's 20. I think Scott, not one, an interesting thing I thought about that will need to be considered is, you know, paid-on-call firefighters, full-time firefighters, and the firefighters that started as paid-on-call and became full-time, what is their anniversary date? And a good example of that would be Scott Siler, who was hired as the chief in 2015. So he'd be coming up on that 10-year benchmark. But as a paid-on-call firefighter, Trent Foreman's another one, I think, that, you know, put in quite a bit of time and then became full-time. So that's something else that needs to be thought through.
That, that seems like an important piece. That seems, that seems like what most of the money is going to be paid with this also. I mean.
Right, I think the discussion is what do we do with the people that are already hit benchmarks? And there's only four or five of them. And then how do we go forward with introducing it? Because I think Lois might be the next one. She's got two years to 10 years. And the average tenure of the entire rest of the staff is less than five years. So we've got plenty of time to, plenty of time to figure it out.
I, I do think the way you have it laid out, though, is not really retroactive, but you do get to your closest payment. So if you, I, Dick, I think you disagree with that, but I do think that if you had 27 years, you get the 25-year payment.
Yeah.
You know, and then when you get 27, there's go. I think it's, it's probably better also to not pay every year, but do one bigger check. Is my personal opinion of, if they had 15 years, they get that one-time payment. When they hit 20, they get the one-time payment. I think that's a, that's a lot more meaningful than, well, I did another year, so I get another $10,000. That's my two cents.
I agree. I agree. And of course, you know, in time, I think the percentage is, is actually a great way to make the calculation. And then in time, if the board says in five years, you know what, we'd like to up these percentages, that's something that can be discussed later. But it's a starting point and I think it's a good policy, a good way to say thank you to our staff. And I, I try to advocate where I can for our staff because they do a great job. And I do want to talk about, eventually about performance-based raises, but not tonight. Just start with longevity bonuses.
Well, I will say, I don't know if we took a vote on this table, did we?
No, we haven't yet. We're still discussing.
I'm done discussing.
Okay. So we do have a motion and support to table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the policy has been tabled for future improvement to come back.
Just one comment in general, I know you're getting to, I do want to thank you, Dick. I mean, you always, you always think about things in a, in a very good way. And it helps, I mean, make other people think, yeah, that's, you're making good points on all of them. So appreciate that.
Okay. Next on our agenda is 11, public comment extended for anything up to five minutes. Still have the same couple of folks in the audience. I think we're all set. 12 is board comment, and I will start to my left, trustee Snink. Do you have anything tonight? Trustee Hermanet?
I am good, too.
Okay. Brief update, we had a planning commission meeting Monday and Cherry Valley Resources had a PMR expansion request. So I would anticipate that coming to the board next, either at our next meeting in February or maybe the first meeting in March. So we'll see that soon. And that's all I have. Clerk Henry?
Yep, just, we got notified last week of a school election. So we are not done with elections yet. So that'll be happening on May 6.
Trustee Zoller?
All set.
And Treasurer Robertson?
I'm not going to have another.
Okay. Do we have?
Motion adjourned.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.